This regular session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. We will not be able to livestream tonight's meeting because of technical difficulties, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/isd535 following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for the meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/boarddocs. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Clerk Flockman.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and community, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we will take a brief 10-minute recess at that time. Item 3, Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and hear during comments to the Board. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A, in accordance with Minnesota statute, set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. The policy and procedure focus on privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on an individual. We have four speakers this evening. When your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You will be heard most clearly by the Board and those in the room if you are speaking directly into the microphone, but not too close. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed. We have a new timing system, a small timer here as our screens are not working, and there will be alarm that goes off after three minutes. And please begin your remarks by stating your name.
... Cameron, can you maybe bend your microphone up a little bit so you're talking?
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay, good. I can't tell. I just want to thank the Board for giving us that opportunity. It was really nice to be able to see that data and talk with other students about it, especially at the first summit.
Cameron, can you maybe bend your microphone up a little bit so you're talking?
Is that better?
Perfect.
I can't tell. I just want to thank the Board for giving us the opportunity, especially at the first summit, to connect with other students and see what they were thinking about that data. I want to thank Creo to Career for helping us with the, well, for doing the survey and for operating that for us. It was really good to see other students' thoughts and beliefs and connections within the school. I want to encourage student representation for next year. We didn't see great enrollment with student leadership throughout this year, and I think that shows within the surveys that there's not a lot of connections within our schools between staff and teachers, staff and students, which would encourage that type of leadership. And I really just want to see the Board supporting it in the next year like they did this year, which I'm really thankful for. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate that.
Board members and Director Barlow.
Well, on the 24th of May, Cabinet and Board were invited to participate in a equity visit at Bamber Elementary School. Along with several Cabinet members and Chair Nathan participated in that. Principal Haglen and some of her staff allowed us to observe a first-grade student-led SEL lesson, and how impressive that was to see first graders lead in addressing their own issues and having the opportunity to speak to what they feel, as well as ways to process what they feel. I thought that was so instructive. Additionally, we were able to participate, observe, if you will, one of the DHH Deaf Hard of Hearing classes in session, and that was powerful to see the passion, and that's really what I like to speak to, the passion that our teachers have with each student, their willingness to connect, their capacity to see value in each student regardless of where they may be and what challenges they may have. So impressive. And then finally, may happen to have been Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and it just so happened that the day we visited, Dr. Lee, who is Korean, was there to share instrumentation from a traditional Korean instrument. I don't recall the name, nor could I explain to you the function. It's very complicated, and yet she was willing to take the time to meet fourth, fifth graders where they were. The students themselves, and this struck me as well, were inquisitive. They did not shy away from, oh, she's different, or this is a different culture. No, they embraced the fact that she was different, that she represented a different culture, and they were naturally inquisitive and willing to learn. And finally, this left me thinking that our district, our students are, there's an African proverb, you know, how are the children? And the response often is, well, if the children are well, then the future is solid. And I would say that based on my observation of what was occurring at Bamber Valley, both in the traditional, non-traditional classrooms, as well as the commitment of staff, our district is in good condition. Our students are ready to learn, they're willing to learn, and as Dan Coleman shared a moment ago, staff is willing to teach, and I just felt so good about being a part of that, and look forward to and hope that other principals will invite us in, because there is a lot for us to learn, observe, and to bring back and share. So kudos to Bamber Valley Elementary.
Thank you.
Colveevers.
Colveevers. Well, in the theme of celebrating our students' achievements, the CTEC EDD Capstone Engineering Course had a presentation here in the boardroom last week where this is a class that is at the end of a sequence of engineering courses, and they have to develop an idea for an invention that will solve a problem, and then model it on paper first, examine the problem it's intending to solve, interview experts in the field, develop an actual physical prototype, test it, create data, have some people try it out, and then report on its effectiveness and which way they would choose. When we talked about deeper learning a few weeks ago, we talked about that hands-on learning and those project-based activities that have meaning to students. This was a prime example of the kind of work that I'd love to see happening in all of our classrooms. These students spent a lot of hours, a lot of learning on their own. They had a great teacher who guided them, but they had to do a lot of problem solving on their own. They hit a lot of barriers, and they had to figure out how to overcome them. So it is a great opportunity that we offer our students, and I was really glad to be invited to come and see these future engineers at work. Today, I think we, well, we kicked it off last week with a graduation at Project Search, but today we continued graduation season with graduation at the Alternative Learning Center, and we have a Project LEAP graduation this week, and of course, this weekend, our three high school graduations, and all of those times and locations are available on our website, and there also is live streaming of each of the high school graduations available. So congratulations to all the graduates and their families for this accomplishment. You will go and make Rochester Public Schools and this community proud in your futures. Yes?
Two more things quickly. Corey Hill Nature Center, which is an amazing facility in Rochester, celebrated 50 years, and a number of school district people were there to join that celebration. And then sort of along the lines of the graduations we've been having for a number of different programs, our fifth grades are having their graduation for their fifth graders into middle school. And sort of the beginning of the kickoff graduation was a week or two ago, they had a fifth-grade track meet. So students from every elementary school in the district gathered at the track, the arena at Mayo High School. There were hundreds of fifth graders in the bleachers, and they participated in a number of different track events. I don't know if I've ever seen that much energy or heard that much noise, but the thing that really struck me was that they were cheering fiercely for kids from their own school. They all had on different colored t-shirts, and for kids from other schools. And I was especially taken where one of the distance runs, one of the students who was running fell down, and a student from another school who was probably going to win stopped and helped that child get up and walked with him so they could both cross the finish line. That's the kind of kids I think, I know we want to raise in the school district, and I could not have been happier or prouder, and it was a wonderful day. That's all.
One final announcement from our Community Engagement Committee of the Board. One of our board goals this year was to host community listening sessions, so we will be hosting our final listening session of the year on Monday, June 12, from 5:30 to 6:30 here in the boardroom, and we call it speed dating a School Board member. We have tables set up, and you can come and speak to each of us individually or all of us as a group, and just give us some feedback on some of the decisions we have coming up or some of the issues in the district. So you are all invited. Our next agenda items are 5.01 through 5.10, our consent agenda items. Would any Board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Director Barlow.
I'd like to request item 5.03, autonomous floor scrubbing robots, do they remove for discussion?
Okay, removing 5.03 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
So move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items except for 5.03. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved, and we will now return to 5.03, Approval of Bids for Autonomous Floor Scrubbing Robots. Director Barlow.
Yes, I ultimately am in full support of this. I did have a couple of questions regarding this, and if I may simply raise them for clarification purposes. The first question is, and I'll give Mr. Carlson an opportunity to. Thank you. Is the reduction of the nine maintenance positions directly related to the purchase of the tenant T7s?
No, we had already needed to make reductions in maintenance, and then we became aware of some special one-time funding to buy the cleaning machines.
And then as the field of robotics continues to increase, are there potential contract changes which may need to occur?
Would it be specific to like employment contracts or contracts with cleaning companies or?
Employment contracts.
I wouldn't think so. Ken's shaking his head at me, but I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Can you ask that question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. As the field of robotics... Sure. As the fill of robotics continues to increase, are there potential contract changes which may need to occur?
I would just, I really appreciate the question, Director Barlow. I think there was an off-the-cuff quip that may have raised some suggestion that the scrubbers were replacements for staff and that's not the case at all. And so I really appreciate you giving us the chance to do it. This is supplemental and as John said, there is no near-term scenario in which any of our current employment contracts would be impacted by automation broadly defined. But as I know you know, we're living in a brave new world and longer term, it is going to be of course very important for all of us to watch the interface between technology and our workforce, but nothing for the foreseeable future in any area of technology, whether it be automation like the scrubbers or artificial intelligence either.
Thank you. And that leads me to part three of this four-part question. And that is, should the policy committee consider the development of a policy that looks at automation, innovation, these types of futuristic things that are rapidly being placed on our doorstep? Not so much for you to answer, I suppose, but more so to just put into play. Not really looking for, didn't expect you to provide a response. And then finally, on the heels of our most recent cyber intrusion, do the Tenet T7s have an operating system that cannot be externally compromised?
We believe that to be true. When they are turned off, so after they work their shift or do their cleaning, you turn them off and they are not accessible. One of the reference checks we did from another reputable employer in town, did some security testing and felt they were perfectly safe and not able to be a path into any other network.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on one question? It does take a human to turn, to set these machines up, turn them on?
That's right. They are a tool for the custodians who are cleaning at night. So they get it set up, they launch it, and they can maybe do some detailed cleaning on water fountains and things like that while these are going up and down the halls scrubbing the floors.
They are not deploying themselves.
That is correct.
That is good to know.
Quick questions?
Director, we're going.
Assuming that this is approved by the board, is there any time where we could actually come and watch them work?
I think that would be amazing. Yes, let's set it up.
These are the same ones on social media that they've been taking pictures of?
I think there might be a picture of them already on social media. These are a different brand, so these are not the Tenet 7s. That was the first order that we got. This is a next generation from a different vendor.
Any other questions, board members? Do I have a motion to approve 5.03 approval of bids for autonomous floor scrubbing robots?
It's been moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5.03 has been approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Item 6.01, DISC update, community partnerships to enrich and extend learning. This is an information item and it's the next in our series on our district-wide initiatives for strategic change. Superintendent Pikel?
Thank you, Chair Nathan and board members. I am noticing Amy Icke, who's our Executive Director of Community Education and Partnerships, and Lita Casper, who coordinates that work for us, coming up to give the board this overview. As board members are aware, community engagement is one of the 11 district-wide initiatives for systems change that we are working on this year as part of our strategic plan. There's another six that will get underway next year. And this has really been a design year in which we have had multifaceted outreach to our communities to bring specificity to the broad direction that the board approved in the strategic plan, which was that we're going to take community partnerships seriously and that we are going to see community partnerships, most, I think differently from the traditional approach in many school districts, as an authentically two-way partnership insofar as it's not just our schools or our district essentially saying to the community, "What can you do for us and our students?" But also, "How can we help those partner organizations meet their missions?" And so we have been working hard on the conceptual work that Lita and Amy will talk about now, and also some of the nuts and bolts. Because in the end, like frankly, every area of our work, the devil is in the details and the process really matters. So this year, we have landed on a conceptual approach to partnership that I have enthusiastically endorsed and we're beginning the process of implementation as we move into the next phase of the work. So I'm looking forward to this update and overview and conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Pikel. I'm going to kick us off. Chair Nathan, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to give you a quick update tonight. As Dr. Pikel said, this is the district-wide initiative for system change on partnership. And just to let you know, I'm honored to sit with Lita Casper, who is in a relatively new position in the district. As we slimmed down the cabinet, some key areas in the strategic plan were identified for specific attention and Lita stepped out of her community schools site facilitator role and into a very complex role that this is a part of as well as some other areas. So very thankful that she chose to do that. Tonight, we're going to give you a strong focus on the strategic effort behind this and I'm going to turn it over to Lita for a little bit of background.
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm excited to share a little bit about the work we've been doing. Oh, I can't get this to move. Here, Amy's going to operate them.
It has to be flipped up on the side.
Oh, turn it on. Turn it on. We just had to turn it on.
Don't tell everyone.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good partnership. I like that.
So by way of introduction, to provide a little bit of context around my interest in this work, I'm going to share just a little bit of background. My teaching career began like 20 years ago in New York City and I was privileged to serve in a school that was a community school, actually. And as a young teacher at that time, I remember that was a brand-new concept for me, something I hadn't learned about in school. And what was fascinating to me was we partnered with local community organizations, including Lehman College in this case, and we had a partnership that brought connections, artistic connections through curriculum into the classroom. And what I learned from that experience was that this was an opportunity to really see kids engage and connect with learning. And in addition to have them connect with learning, I also had my capacity built by seeing this, right? So in this case, I just, I learned instantly that there was a benefit to my students and there was also a benefit to me professionally. Following a few incredible years, I was just interested in people, culture, life. I was armed with a teaching degree and knew I could move anywhere. And so I was really fascinated by people and culture and I decided I was going to move to this rural community in southeastern Alaska where I was privileged to serve in a beautiful area that was much smaller than New York City. But in that area, I was, I really got to learn that partnering with community meant honoring tradition, culture, identity, and traditional values and connecting that back with curriculum. So after a few years there, I ended up in Rochester, Minnesota. I've been here for 10 years and I've been privileged to serve at Gage Elementary School as a fourth grade teacher and an instructional coach. And then the last six years I spent at Ripper Side, as Amy mentioned, facilitating school and community around student success. So I'm sharing this with you because it has demonstrated to me that partnerships have tremendous potential to impact the work that we do with students and families and also impact the future of our community. So thank you for having us today and I'm going to move on to the next. We go to the next slide. So I have, I love this quote, "The human's ability to collaborate is what sets us apart from other species." And the reason that it resonates with me is because we as humans are actually built to collaborate. And we see that from our, in our earliest learners. Last week, I was in a classroom at Sunset Terrace Elementary School and I got to see four little kids who were together on the carpet collaborating and building a little structure of magnet tiles. And through that, through observing this experience, I got to see that kids were negotiating and they were collaborating and they were questioning each other and they were agreeing and they were disagreeing. And in that moment, I remember thinking that this is who we are as a species. This is who we are as humans. And so I think it makes sense, partnerships, cross-sector partnership makes sense on so many levels, but it also makes sense on our most basic human levels because it's who we are.
So tonight, we're going to share with you the two parts to our DISC work, including the first part, which was about selecting or developing a model to think about partnership and how we develop partnerships. And that includes some work about identifying our key strategic partners. We know that we literally have hundreds of partnerships within the district, but narrowing that list to those that need some strategic caretaking was part of this task, as well as developing an implementation plan. So you will hear Lita talk about both of those parts tonight, one at a time.
So here's how we get, can you hear me? Okay. So here's how we gathered information. We know that our partnerships range and connect with every piece of our school district. And so we knew that just identifying one specific group was going to be too narrow. So we had three groups that we really gathered information from, our DISC group, which was primarily community partners. So we really got that range of connection with our community partners. We also had our community schools team, which was composed of seven community school facilitators who organized school and community around student success. And they're currently doing this work with partnerships on the local level, serving their individual schools. And finally, we had our district-wide partnership and I'm really, really thrilled that I get to tell you more about this later, so I'll hold off on that. But that was the third area and it really spanned the whole district. And then of course, this work has all been surrounded by, or the center of this work has been data research practice. And so you'll see here in this graphic, we really looked at Minnesota, we looked at national data, we looked at Minnesota data. But then it was really interesting to get closer to Olmsted County, to Rochester, and then right here in our, in Rochester Public School District. And what was really fascinating about that was, and interesting, was that it really demonstrated to us that we have many shared goals and there's a lot of overlap in the goals that we have as Rochester Public Schools and in Olmsted County. And so it was really, really interesting to look at that. Just to give you an idea of some of the depth and breadth of what these groups looked at, here are some pieces of work that we examined to inform this work. And many of these pieces of data and information were shared from our, directly from our community partners. So this is really fun. We, and also just very confirmational because what we learned in this process with our, with these multiple groups is that our data within Rochester Public Schools is very closely aligned with the data that we're seeing across our community. And maybe that's not a surprise to you, but it was very confirmational as we looked at that. One of the most interesting pieces and that we saw was the data that was included in our Minnesota student survey related to mental health was almost a direct mirror of the data and information that was shared in our community health needs assessment by our, by our, by members of our community across Olmsted County. And so that's one example, but there are many examples across this common data that we shared. So it demonstrates to me that we have shared goals, which is the foundation of sustainable partnerships. Another element within our charge was to really take a look at existing community partnerships to understand what we really have across our school district today. And so what we did was we connected this work back to our strategic action plan and really tried to, really tried to determine what are the, what are the primary areas where our partnerships fall. And so those primary areas really fell into three different categories: basic human needs, deeper learning, and development in resources. So basic human needs would be organizations who support Maslow's hierarchy of needs that go beyond the capacity of our schools. Deeper learning are partnerships that support increased access, opportunities, foster identity, and create economic connectedness. And so those examples might be opportunities within like PTEC or CTEC or enrichment, like somewhat, like you had mentioned, with Corey Hill Nature Center. And finally, the third category is development in resources. And those are partnerships that bring invaluable expertise, financial support, and cultural capital to the work that we do every day. And so those might be philanthropic partners, but they also could be partners like CERT or Promote Women who bring an expertise that we don't, that we don't necessarily have.
All right. So all along the way, we tried to stay very closely connected with the broader strategic plan. And you can see that, we'll call it our DISC, is one of the building blocks of the strategic plan. But as you look across the plan, you can see how many other areas can be enhanced by community partnership. And we think about community partnership as expanding our capacity to provide opportunities for students. So really, there's so many different areas where we can pull that together. Our charge is the one block, but we know our work affects the other blocks as well.
So one of the parts to this process was prioritizing partnerships that have the greatest chance of success. And so in, throughout this process, we really tried to create a space that has essential elements for fostering sustainability within partnerships and determining what, what to prioritize. So the first one is goal alignment. I think that's probably pretty, pretty well expected. Can we clearly identify what we want from our partner and what our partner wants from us? Impact potential. Does the partner have a fundamental impact on student learning? Can you exist without this partner? One piece that's really paramount in this work is really building trusting relationships and transparency. Oftentimes, there's, if we look at our partnerships that have floundered, this oftentimes has been the area that, that that's happened. And so, and finally then, the resource leveraging and capacity building. So now I get to share with you a district-wide partnership that's in its infancy. And it's, it has the potential to be very powerful. So what I want you to reflect back to is just that previous slide that I shared with kind of those five essential elements to sustainability in partnerships. So three years ago, Rochester Public Schools noticed that there was a significant number of students who are experiencing homelessness. And we know that high mobility impacts outcomes for students. And so our Students in Transition Department partnered with Olmsted County and Three Rivers Community, Three Rivers Community Action. And they had applied for a grant called Homework Starts With Home. So that was a little pilot. We had a housing navigator who was embedded in, in some of our schools. And it turned out that that was a really outstanding opportunity because that is a resource we can't, we actually can't support housing outreach from Rochester Public Schools because it's outside of our lens of, of, really of expertise and really capacity. And so one year ago, when legislative funding was allocated to Olmsted County, roughly $800,000 a year in homeless prevention aid was allocated to Olmsted County for the next six years. And so we knew at that point, and this started back in October, that we would, that it would make sense to allocate some of those financial resources within Olmsted County to connect, to connect more to housing navigators and embed them within our schools. And so those two housing navigators are called HOPE navigators, Housing Outreach to Promote Education, and they're currently embedded in four schools. It's been one of, it's been an incredibly impactful partnership, but I want to go back to those five key elements, which you'll see under prioritizing key partners. We started with needs. As you can see from that graph, we had a significant number of students who are experiencing homelessness in Rochester. We had strong goal alignment. Of course, it's, it's in our best interest to have students in stable, safe homes because then they can access their education. It's also in line with Olmsted County's housing stability team and their goals. There was significant impact potential and we knew that. This is work that we cannot do without that relationship. We don't have the resources... We don't have the resources, we don't have the capacity. And so that's why there is such power in this partnership. There's also a strong commitment to fostering these healthy relationships, and we're, of course, leveraging existing community resources that were not here before. And so through this process, we've gotten to see that, we got to learn that internal collaboration with staff is key. We definitely can't just put these two HOPE, HOPE Navigators in schools. We need to work collaboratively with the schools and with the Social Work Department to ensure that it's a, it's a healthy start. Coordination with legal, we obviously had to work through some pretty significant data sharing agreements. We had selected interested sites, but we also wanted to make sure that there was, we wanted interest and need within the buildings that these HOPE Navigators were embedded. And then regular communication internally and externally with, with all of these stakeholders. And then, of course, there's a balance of advocacy. My commitment and my, my, my support is toward our students and our families in Rochester Public Schools. But knowing that this, knowing the power of this partnership and the impact potential that it has, I also know that I have to be, I have to balance my advocacy with the goals and expectations of the, the two organizations that we're partnering with on this. I could talk about this all day, and I won't, but I'd love to at some other time, and, and hopefully you can come visit.
We had just a few legal meetings, didn't we? Moving ahead to the, this sort of sub-part of Deliverable 1, one of those elements or calls for our group was to determine a list of key strategic partners that require a little bit more caretaking than potentially some others. It doesn't diminish the other partnerships we have in the district, but really focuses our efforts that have a limit on the ones that are, have the best potential to move our strategic plan forward and to help our students. So part of Lita's work over the last few months was, first of all, to just take that global look with her teams across the district and identify partnerships that are happening, but also to then narrow to these strategic partners. And you just have one as an example here, and it happens to be Olmsted County that we copied here as well. But you can see on that list all the different projects that are happening or groups that we're partnering with at the county. Our work aligns quite nicely. And you can imagine this kind of a block for Mayo Clinic, or our CTC, for the Chamber, for a member of different organizations where we have multiple things going on. The first task was to develop sort of who the key partners are. Our next task is to develop how we do that caretaking at a high level. So we're not quite there yet, but you'll see it in our goals. So we're going to move from Deliverable 1 over to Deliverable 2, right? And talk about our implementation plan.
So these are in draft form. We're still working with Dr. Pakel to solidify them. But as, as drafts, we, one of, our first goal is to incorporate a needs and assets assessment tool that's been developed, piloted, and refined. A needs and assets assessment tool can help schools identify, understand, and better serve our school community, and it can help, help build relationships, guide decisions, invest stakeholders, allocate resources, and share leadership. It's, it's a best practice, and it makes sense. In fact, some of our schools are already, particularly our community schools, are already involved in this work. And so I'm excited about that. The second goal is to formalize a consistent internal process for building and sustaining partnerships. Ultimately, this is a toolkit intended to support teams who are focused on building strategic partnerships. It's really intended to, to provide a supportive framework or, or guide to, to people who are, are building community partnerships. This is, I, um, this is an interesting one. So we are developing the capacity of at least three RPS leaders as experts in data sharing with community organizations. Overwhelmingly, our staff wants to do the right thing, and sometimes data sharing agreements can be scary. And so one thing we noticed is that, that this is an area of, of growth for us. And so really, ultimately, just to sum it up, this area would really provide awareness and comfort around data sharing, as well as the expertise required to do that in the, in the best, in the right way. Key strategic partners will rate the RPS strategy for community partnerships as emerging and effective. This was a really, this came out of, actually, came out of our, our DISC group. And part of this, part of this initiative will be to really improve connectedness among our community and our partner organizations. And actually, we already have partner organizations who are willing to facilitate this with us. So that's exciting. And finally, select a technology platform to support partnership development. And so that's, those are, those are our goals. And finally, through this process, we've learned that to foster sustainable and strategic partnerships, we need tools and a place to grow and nurture those relation, and nurture those relationships. And to give people leading those projects tools for success. This is work that we believe is vital to the, to the success of our students, our school district, and to the future of our community, and we're really excited to be here. So thank you. What questions do you have?
Did we nail it? Is it 15?
A little over, but it was good.
Questions, board members, or comments? Dr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Casper, you mentioned at the beginning, an $800,000 grant. Is that the six-year total, or is that per year?
No, it's $800,000 per year for the next six years.
Big difference, yes.
It's a big difference, yeah. It's county funding, it's not our funding, but the purpose of the funding is homeless prevention aid. And so it really is specific to students and families. And so that need is best met in, within our schools, where students and families often share this first.
So if I understand what you're saying, then it's specific in Olmsted County to students and families, so it's not fixing the problem in the bigger Olmsted County?
It also is, yes. They are also serving in other schools. They don't have near, the other schools across Olmsted County don't have nearly the need that we do, and that's clear in our data as well. But yes, they're, they are serving those other schools as well.
But not the general, as we know, the general homeless population, if it's not students or families, this money is dedicated just for that.
It's specific to, yep, it's specific to students and families.
So if I hear what you're saying, then the $800,000 is for students and families across Olmsted County, it's not for other purposes as well?
Correct, you are correct.
Thank you.
It is.
Director Barlow.
Lita, first of all, I'm from Alaska, so when I saw Bristol Bay, I thought, ah, I go Alaska. Were you working for BBNC or for the?
I wasn't. I was working in, in a rural community called Nushtiyak.
Okay, thank you. Not familiar, that's very rural. So just a observation in terms of Initiative 3, Goal 3, Initiative 3, I was excited to realize that this is a call-out, if you will, to move away from working in silos, if you will. A lot of organizations, nonprofits, otherwise, they all, we all have a goal, maybe even serving the same population, but going about it in our own ways. So I was excited to see 3, and I hope it becomes not just draft, but where, it becomes a superintendent, a reality. So thanks.
Thank you.
Director Markman. Do you have, are you doing any work with the other school districts in, in Olmsted County to see what they're doing, or any potential partnerships? I mean, you said that the bulk of the homelessness problem was here in Rochester, but...
Yeah, our McKinney-Ventle liaison program as well is connected with other schools in, across Olmsted County. So we are definitely sharing, sharing, sharing capacity, sharing expertise, and really trying to, we're really, I mean, honestly, this team is really trying to end homelessness across this community.
But also just to add briefly, the post-secondary and career readiness work that will roughen the second, and Heather Hogan is leading, also has a strong element of partnership with neighboring school districts, partly because it's also supported by our Achievement and Integration Aid, but also because we concluded through that DISC effort that that is a shared priority for school districts around us, even though we have many differences in the students we serve. Career readiness and post-secondary readiness was a big issue for them, and so that's actually where we're going to have, I would say, probably one of our strongest opportunities for partnership with the districts around Rochester.
Yep. And I should clarify, too, that the reason that we shared the, the partnership with Olmsted County is because it really was a part of experimenting and testing what was required to build strong partnerships. So just to point that out.
Director Garcia.
I feel like there are plenty of times where I show up to a board meeting, and I'm presented with something that makes me want to quit my day job and being a board member, so that I can do some of the innovative work that we're doing in the district. So I really appreciate, I really appreciate all of the work that's being done, and I think most of us recognize that our students need more than ABCs and 1-2-3s on the wall, and that there are so many more needs that they have that, that I don't know any educator wouldn't want to meet, especially if it's outside the classroom. And I think the work that you're doing sort of ties nicely to a comment that I made in our past study session, where our community is relying on us to be like a community district, so, or having multiple community schools, more than just the few that we have, because we need to make, I think we all want to be able to provide for all of those needs, not just for the student, but for the families as well. And so I think that these are excellent ways to do that, and it really, truly takes a village, or at least multiple counties, in order to get some of these needs met. And I think that, you know, like a lot of people see, it's interesting to me how people react to our budget, because I recognize, like, even the budget that we have, the dollar amount that shows up at the end of the day, is not enough to cover all of the things that we need. And I can understand people wanting to sort of say, like, okay, well, then if we just cut everything to just academics, we would be fine. But then we're cutting out parts of students and staff in our community that, that matter. And so I really appreciate all of the work that you're doing, and I, yeah, I don't, I don't know what else to say, except for I can feel the passion from both of you, and like, now I want to do some of the work, too.
You are welcome to.
Okay, well talked.
And you know, I think you make a really good point, too, though, because this is really about leveraging resources that exist across our community, doing work that we do not have the capacity to do alone.
Right.
And that's what it's about.
And that connects directly to their ability to learn. I think that's the important part. We are not just doing this out of a sense of humanity and the goodness of all people, but it directly affects students' ability to achieve what we need them to achieve.
Director Cook.
Yeah, I wanted to, well, thanks for the presentation. I'll just echo my, my colleagues' comments that way. But on Goal 5, you called out selecting a technology platform to support all of this partnership work. And the milestone was set almost two years out, and so I guess, two parts to that. Is there some, something you could share about what a technology platform looks like for partnership development, and also why that was identified as a need that is so far out on the horizon?
Sure. Sure. I can speak to that a little bit. Part of the reason it's far out is we haven't begun the search yet. But the core reason ties back to, the best example I can give is a, let's say, a salesperson for a corporation. As they interact with multiple clients, they need a way to track, sort of, who have I seen lately, what, what are their needs? And as we talk about hundreds of partnerships, and potentially these intense strategic partnerships, where multiple people in the district, you saw the Olmsted County list, where those projects are being run by 10 different leaders around the district, how we centralize all of that so that the people who are caretaking that partnership have a good handle on what are all the moving pieces with the partnership. And right now, it's happening in spreadsheets and shared Google Drives and things that are, are not built for that sharing. And so we know it's out there, it has to be out there, we just haven't begun the search yet, so we're imagining it might take us a bit to.
That, that helps, because what I, what I thought of as I read that was like a CRM tool of some kind, and it was just, yeah, okay, that makes sense to me.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
One brief, just one brief point that I think is implicit in what Amy and Lita shared, but especially because we decided to focus on one particular partner just for brevity's sake and for clarity, so we talked about Olmsted County. I think it's really important that we're very committed to see partnership, for lack of a better way to put it, as equally focused on sort of the big, large institutions that touch a lot of people in our community, but also not only grassroots organizations like nonprofits, but organizations that may not even be formal organizations, but are informal networks in our communities. And so that's trickier in some ways, because they're not necessarily organizations that have org charts and websites. But we know that to reach many of our students and their families and impact some of these issues, an ability to work with organizations that don't necessarily have spreadsheets, boards, and timelines is equally important. And those are actually two different muscles that we need to develop. They're related, but we want to make sure that we can do both of them over time, and so that, that's, that's going to take more than like one Lita to do that. And we're going to need to build that capacity across our organizations, because I know, I go to some meetings I have, and the person walks in, and they almost have a PowerPoint, it's very much like that. I go to others, and it's a, it's a conversation that is much more circular and ongoing, and, and both are equally important for us to be, to be skilled at. So I wanted to just highlight that, that we're, that they're, they're different and equally important to us.
Director Markman. A follow-up with what Dr. Pakel just said. If there are such organizations out there who might happen to be watching this presentation, who are interested in partnership, what's the best way for them to go about that? Who should they contact? Lita?
I will accept, I will accept everyone.
They already know, Lita, I guarantee it.
Yes.
No, in all seriousness, that's part of what we're setting up here. And part of the desire that came out of the DISC group, they said, you're the largest organization among these youth-serving organizations or related, you need to pull us together so that we can have more of that dialogue. And that was a, you know, a perfect fit for us to learn that and bring it into our goals.
Any other comments or questions?
So many.
Our thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is great. Item 7.01, approval of 2023-24 School District Budget. This is a prep-for-action item. Approval of the budget will be an action item on the June 20th agenda. The board had a detailed discussion of the proposed budget at our May 30th study session. But Superintendent Pakel, any updates?
Yes, Chair Nathan, Directors of the Board. We had a robust, robust conversation at the study session, and I have asked John Carlson to revisit a somewhat updated version of that information for you. It is also information that John and I shared in four budget information sessions that we conducted over the last week and a half, with a diverse group of people who wanted to join us virtually to ask questions about our budget. I know that board members covered a good amount of this information, or received a briefing on this information at the study session. I, I've asked John to revisit it, partly because this is a regular board meeting as opposed to a study session, partly because there's some added information that we've shared, and partly because this is just really important. And we are moving toward my final recommendation to you, which you will receive in advance of the June 20th regular board meeting, when we'll be asking you to take action on that budget to meet the state requirements of completing the budget by July 1. And so I'm going to empower John to be as rapid as he feels moved to be, given that board members have covered the core information, but I think it's worth revisiting the big picture as we're nearing the completion of our process.
Okay.
Chair Nathan, can I interrupt with a question? Would you be helpful to us and point out as well as you can what's different?
Yes.
Compared to what we've seen before?
Sure, thank you.
What's new and what's?
Yeah, thank you for that context. This is a modified version of what you got, because after we met with you last week, then we did these public sessions, and I thought, I need to give a little bit more background, a little more context to that group of people, so, and then Superintendent asked me to throw in another table this afternoon, and so there's even one more tweet at the public even one more tweak at the public.
And I know that we'll have those recordings accessible to us and we can watch those. But hearing it from you, what's different would be helpful, too, because I know you're the expert.
Yep. Okay, so basic, basic background here, information. So $14 million was the deficit we were trying to solve back in January of this year. And this was not a surprise to us. That was one of the key points I wanted all the public that was listening in to know. We had been saying our finance staff likes to help the board and guide the superintendent as far and as in advance as possible. And so we had been saying as far back as 2015 that we are going to have significant budget reductions after the 2019-2020 school year. At that point, it was estimated about $7 million. What happened at the end of the 1920 school year, though, was we were entering into that time of COVID and we were awarded $42 million of grant money from the federal government to be used over the next four school years. That was not a payment that was directly sent to us. We have to spend the money and then apply for reimbursement as we go. And so we kind of broke down the money. This is kind of new information where we did one-time expenditures. We bought air purifiers, like the one you see over there. We supplied those in all of our classrooms throughout the district. We bought some of the cleaning robots that we've talked about even tonight. And we bought a lot of technology to support distance learning. We also started brand-new positions that never existed in the district, COVID-19 response facilitators. They were doing contact tracing and doing anything they could in their power to slow the spread. And we hired a couple IT positions to keep track of all of this new technology that we were receiving very rapidly. A large chunk of our money has been spent on maintaining existing positions. So rather than go and cut the budget in the spring of 2020, like maybe we could have or should have, had we known what we would have known in the fall of 2020, we maintained a lot of our positions with the federal money. I think that kind of says the same thing. So we, we chose to do that. Had we known that we were going to drop our enrollment, just like every private public school district in the United States of America, went backwards a little bit. We experienced a small percentage decline in our number of students as well. We lost 661 students from October 1 of 2020 to October 1 of 2021. Or maybe that's 2019 to 2020, but 661 that year. And then it's leveled off since then. But what that has led to is some painful staffing reductions in the springs of 2022 and 2023 to align our budget to our students and to what we can actually afford. This is a chart that we've been sharing now for a little over a year that's just trying to, in a very, very simple way, show that the blue line is the amount of staff that we have had as a percentage basis from the base year of 2011-2012 compared to the number of students that we've also grown in that same time period. You can see through the decisions we've made in the spring of 2022 and again in 2023. Again, these are not easy decisions, very painful to walk through this process, but we've bent that curve on the staff numbers. And that is starting to come closer into alignment with the student numbers. So this is a new chart that you had not seen before, I don't believe. But this one is now trying to show where we're at in that June of 2012 to where do we expect to be at when we start this next budget year. And so I just went by contract group here, school board, same superintendent, same the cabinet. So which is the group I am part of. We are down 33% in numbers from a decade ago. Our principals are up 76%. Now, there's a little nuance in that story in that back in that timeframe, we had teachers on special assignment serving in an administrative capacity. They had their principal licensure, but they were not at that time in the principal group. So that explains a good chunk of that difference. Our teacher group has grown 20% over the same time period. Our education support group, also known as formerly known as paraprofessionals, has grown 24%. Mental and physical health, we've grown 62%. Operations professionals, 57%. Maintenance, 23%. And the budget that we're putting out there, again, overall difference over the 11-year period is about 22% growth down from what was 28-29% a couple of years ago. This is also new as of this afternoon. We haven't really parsed the data like this before, but we tried to say what, where's the change in teacher counts? Because that was a common question we got during our public sessions. And even our own teachers group has asked that from us. And so I'd worked with them a couple of months ago. We had sorted the data. And you have that attachment now in board docs tonight that is summarized just a little bit different. This just tries to collapse it even further to make it understandable on a presentation screen. But you can see the different groups as I've put them together, like kindergarten to grade six, we've grown 7%. Well, that tracks pretty much exactly right on with our student growth. So you would maybe logically conclude, like I am logically concluding, that does match and track exactly with the student growth. Content areas, those being like English, Health, Math, Reading, Science, Social Studies, World Languages, those are down 3%. Our special areas, as we call them, like Art, Library, Music, Fayed are up 9%. Career and Technical, I think there's been some misinformation over time that we cut out all of the career and technical types of education. The opposite is true. We've added 87% towards those groups of positions. Gifted and Talented, up 44%. Our English learner is relatively stable. Our Special Education Teachers, now these are classroom and direct service Special Education Teachers, all of these are actually our classroom or direct service by the definition we came up with, are up 44%. So in total, our Classroom Teachers, Direct Teachers are up 13%. Then we, we took the teachers and we sorted into Supporting Teacher roles. So these are still very valuable positions. We need these positions. But think of these as maybe not the teacher standing in front of a group of 20 kindergarteners. These are the Supporting Teachers within the building. Our Interventionists are down 31%. Our Counselors are up 80%. Social workers up 221%, so on and so forth. The Instructional Coaches, I know that that one sometimes generates some conversations and we kind of have an irrational percentage there of 1,842%. The Teachers on Special Assignment, though, like I said before, some of those have been converted into principal jobs. And so that's why we are down now to six Teachers on Special Assignment. So there's been an 80% reduction. But overall, our Supporting Teacher area growth has been 66%. Another factor that increased our deficit from $7 million to $14 million, and I think this is also new information, is that we just put a strong emphasis on making sure all of our hourly workers were increased to at least $18 per hour through our last round of contract negotiations in 2022. On July 1, all of these workers, the minimum pay will now be $19 per hour. And I see we would want to keep stepping that up as we go. Now, I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but in some cases, some people got three, four, and five-dollar per hour raises because they were down at $14 an hour or something like that. And so when you do that to 1,000 employees, times how many hours they work in a year, it added millions of dollars of new cost to our budget. We think it's the right thing to do. We were having a very tough time filling these positions. We listened to what the groups were telling us and we responded to that. And we're very thankful that the board supported our negotiating teams in that. We, just like our hourly workers, we fully intend that we are going to have a significant increase in teacher salaries coming up. We have to go through that collective bargaining process. The first meetings start, I think, next week. And we plan to walk through that over the next several months and get to a conclusion on a new teacher contract. People have asked, well, how come you just don't cut all those other things like the copiers and the printers and all those things? And yes, those are a part of the budget. In our case, though, just like most Minnesota public schools, the staffing, the salaries and benefits, the adults who are serving all of the students makes up 80% of the budget. So there really is no way around making budget cuts without having some impact on positions. So the process of how we got to the $14 million, we worked through a budget-cutting process, a committee, central office leaders, and some principal representation. We put together a list that was slightly larger than $14 million and gave the superintendent some flexibility to cross some things off and make those recommendations to you, which he did at the end of January. And then you voted to approve that on February 7. And so putting all that together, the general fund, as we have presented it to you and all the detailed information you have, is balanced. Revenues are expected to be just slightly greater than expenditures. Just some quick highlights on our budget, what's included, what's the basis of our budget. We did get a 4% increase from the legislature. I think that's the largest one I've seen in my 12 years here. Our voter-approved referendum, which is indexed to inflation, so it's adjusting 8% for next school year. We experienced a large increase in the Special Education funding. That's going up 16% for our district next year, along with our English learner. Funding is going up 74%. Based on the results of the enrollment study, we did the pretty comprehensive look at it a year ago. We are projecting, again, a very small decline. It's less than 2%. I just rounded it up. Right now, as we're tracking, we are very, very close to where we were a year ago. So I'm not expecting it hopefully to be a minus 2%. I think we'll, we'll come in very close or just slightly below. We also learned of some new revenue. The legislature finished up their work and we became aware of new aid to support our hourly workers who become unemployed in the summer. That's going to have a direct expense, so that's going to be included in the budget. We have new student support personnel aid, library media aid, menstrual product and opiate antagonist aid. And so now we have some direct funding for some of these issues that were prioritized by our legislature. One big boost in revenue that we had already known about, so we had already worked this into our budgeting, was the compensatory revenue. And this is to support our work at schools. And so it's driven based on poverty counts at each building. And so our principals have the opportunity to select the positions they think they need that will best address the situations that they're dealing with in their building. The federal revenue, we are planning, this is the last year now, the money needs to be spent from the COVID money in this next school year, 13.3 million is the amount that's left, or we're projecting that will be left here at the end of this school year. On our expenditure side, again, 58% of our positions, our teachers and principals, need new contracts. So we've put in an estimate of what we think they will get paid next year. Of course, we have to walk through that process and get to the other side and see where we land. The rest of us, there are not teachers, not principals, so the other 42%, we have settled agreements with the school board. And so we budgeted what the exact salaries will be for those positions. We did a general reduction on contracted services, supplies, capital expenditures where we could, but in areas where we couldn't, like utilities, we added budget for that. And something new we're doing this year is just what I think is a budgeting best practice is we're making sure we have a contingency of 1% of our budget just sitting in a budget code and available should something unforeseen happen in the next 13 months, because this budget will take us all the way through June of 2024. And every year, something happens that we don't expect. And so it's nice that we will have that worked into our budget to respond to the needs that come up. I believe this chart was in there last week. This is just a summary of where the reductions are. Now, this is, we can measure FTEs 1,000 different ways, it feels like. But this is just comparing to what we brought to you as a school board to approve for the budgeted FTEs one year ago versus what we're bringing to, to approve for budgeted FTEs starting in July. And so that's what the comparison is, original to original. And so you can see there's some reduction in cabinet, although we've already implemented those. This is just saying that, confirming that we will have six of us. Our principals will be down slightly, administrators down, teachers down 3%, ESPs 4%, student nutrition 2%, mental and physical health. I just wanted to clarify that we are not cutting any mental health positions. Where we dug into the data last night, the physical health, our health office nurses is a reduction where in a school where we had two nurses and then another school where we're actually going to share a nurse between the buildings that are right next door to each other. And so we got that recommendation from our Office of Academics that they think that can work. And then we're reducing a little bit clerical and nine positions in our maintenance. So overall, we're going to be down about 3% in staff. I think that's a little over, is that 100 positions, something like that? All right. So the general fund budget is 278 million on the revenues, 278 million on the expense. If we were to say, does this budget comply with school board policy and that the fund balance policy will be met, we can check that box and say, yes, it does. It will be above the school board policy. This is just a historical look at our unassigned fund balance. Again, the policy was adjusted in this last year by the policy committee and voted on by the school, full school board. But the policy says we need to be at 8% or more at the end of the year, and we're on track to meet that. There are a variety of other funds that we budget. So our food service operation, our community education, building construction for finishing our referendum projects and doing the John Marshall indoor air quality project. Our debt service fund pays all of our bills on our bonds. We are self-insured on all of our workers' comp, dental, health. We put money away for flexible spending for our employees. We have to track all that money. And then the OPEB trust is an account we've been funding to pay obligations for health insurance and retirement for some of our employees. So all total, the budget that we have right now is 372 million on the revenue, 391 million on the expense. The reason why it might look like it's not balanced is in the building construction fund specifically, where we are continuing to draw down and finish out the projects. So the money comes in in the year that we sell the bonds and then we spend down from there. And this is how we ended our public sessions and we had some engaging dialogue from there. So I will turn it over to the superintendent. You can kind of take it from there.
I would thank you, John, not just for this presentation, but for your leadership through a very challenging process. I would say the superintendent's final recommendation, not may, but will include some small adjustments. We'll make those explicit to you when we bring that recommendation. I'm not prepared to do that right now. This is, as you know, a repeat visit of the study session with some additional information. It will be substantially very closely aligned with where we've been, but there will be some differences and we'll highlight those for you when we post that material and brief you on it before we ask you to vote.
Board members, any other questions? Director Workman?
I have a question about the Special Education, the cross-subsidy. My recollection was that the legislature was going to be reducing that amount somewhere around half. But I see that in our case, it's 5.8 million out of 15.1.
That's correct. So their long-term goal, or long-term as it's written, is by the 26-27 school year, they'll be covering half of it.
Half, okay.
Yeah. And so they're kind of stepping up to that as we go.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Director McLaughlin.
I made a note to myself, I almost interrupted you, but I probably have asked this before. What does an interventionist do?
So interventionist was a broad term for like reading and math support positions. There may be some other technical job titles in there, but those are the main, main terms for interventionist.
And then I wanted to follow up on this question. I want to listen to the recordings, but can you give us just a summary of what the community told you in response to this question?
I think there were just general questions about like where were the FTEs? And so that's why we tried to provide a little more commentary on that. What other themes do you remember?
There were very, it wasn't a feedback session insofar as like, what do you think? It was what are your questions? A lot of questions about the history. How did we get here? And then some questions about why cut when the state came in with an increased funding? I think those are the two biggest themes. Just candidly, Director McLaughlin, we, we didn't have a ton of questions after each session. We had some good attendance, but people mostly kind of said, oh, but we'll share those with you. But those would be for sure the two big things. There were a couple people who had a very specific issue that they came to talk about. So we tried to answer their specific question that was very focused on maybe their school or something like that. But I think for the whole, it's how did we get here and why reductions if the state increased funding as much as it did?
And can you just give us a ballpark of how many people attended each of those and how many there were?
Oh, we definitely can when we send you the videos. We just did the last one last night. I'd say the first one, we had about 15. And second was about 10. And then the third was about five. And then we went up again last night to about 12, 15. So.
Thank you.
It certainly was good, I think it certainly was good for us to hear the questions. I think, you know, every year, as we continue to refine our processes, starting next fall, we'll have our Community Budget Advisory Committee in place. That'll be an additional ongoing support of advice for, you know, the board and administration on those things. So that'll be an ongoing multi-year commitment that people will really get up to speed on all the details of what we're doing. So community engagement on school finance, of course, is always kind of a challenge. But we really thank the people who made the time to come and ask those questions.
Thank you.
Director Workman?
One more question on attachment F you have, which is the FTEs by employee group. You have the orig- You have the original amount budgeted for several, each of several years. So I'm curious, is how does the actual budget that we are right now, how did that line up with what we had originally projected? I'm not expecting you to rattle off the top of your head what all these differences might be. Are they fairly well aligned? Did you find any major differences?
Yeah. So this year, what we try to do is set a budget and stick to it, but that's sometimes impossible. For example, if there was a large growth in third graders at Jefferson and we noticed that in summer, we're going to roll out another third grade teacher at Jefferson and bring that to you for your approval retroactively. There are also grants and other things that are received, and so those sometimes fund a position for a short term or a long term, and so we work those in. So I would say from when we set the budget to January thirty-first, when I last gave you an update, I think the difference was twenty-something FTE. So very closely aligned.
Very close. Okay, great. Thank you for that.
So Mr. Carlson, on the chart, on the general fund, we have a minimum in our policy of eight percent. We're at ten point one. How many, calculation, how many dollars are associated with each percentage of the general fund?
Sure. So the general fund budget that's proposed is two hundred and seventy-eight million, so one percent of that is two point seven five million.
Okay. So we have about...
Multiply that by ten.
Okay. So we have about...
Twenty-seven and a half million dollars projected to be in savings at the end of the year, which would cover up to one month and maybe half of the next month if like all funding was cut off from the state.
And that amount, the amount that covers a month goes up as our, the size of our budget goes up?
As the budget goes up, yes. Yes. So the kind of relative term in here is just to track it in a percentage, but the dollars will grow as the budget grows.
And then you mentioned that eighteen hundred percent increase in instructional coaches. I did want to give you a chance to point out that in some of the preliminary numbers you gave us in March, we are making cuts to instructional coaches this year.
Yep. And that reflects, the fifty point five would be the recommended or the proposed as we know it right now for next year's budget. So that would probably be slightly down from where it sits today.
And the number I saw in March, it's about eight point, nine point six, eight point six?
Higher than that number?
FTEs?
Of the reduction, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That sounds approximately right.
Okay. And then you talked about including an estimate of the settlements for our teachers and our principals. We don't know how that is going to end up. What happens if we settle higher than your estimate? What do you have to then do with the budget?
Then we have to come back, and we will update our forecast, and then it will play definitely into our budget setting for the next year. Hopefully, the estimate would be not such that would bankrupt us in the current year, but it would be something that we might have to adjust to in the coming years.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a budget adjustment in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, but it would affect twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
Correct. It could be where we're sitting here saying, hey, we have a balanced budget this year. We think, you know, we have one more leg of the stool here to talk about in a couple of weeks with you. But we could end up returning with budget cuts depending on how this all plays out.
And one of the things we do know going forward is that our general fund formula funding from the state will now be tied to inflation. So one of the comparison points we'll have is how much the settlements are compared to what we anticipate inflation being, because that's what we know we're getting from the state. As opposed to in the past, we could have made a settlement and have no idea what the state was going to fund us at, but we have a little bit more certainty in that.
That is right. That's a good point to make.
Director Rockman?
So we may hear, I mean, I've heard from maybe just a couple people, well, you've got an excess in the general fund, this ten point whatever that we've set aside, percent that we've set aside. You've got more money for the state. If we added all those up, it's probably more than fourteen million dollars that we're cutting. But the explanation is that we are dealing with a structural deficit, so that if we said, okay, fine, we're not going to do any cuts now, we're just kicking the can down the road and making it worse. Is that accurate?
That's correct. In the long haul, it means it's, think of it as your checking account and your money market account at home. You'd just be taking withdrawals out of your money market, and then eventually it is going to be a zero in there. So you've got to deal with it at some point.
Any other questions or comments, board members? So we'll have a lot to think about when we receive the next update and discussion at the June twentieth meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Well, board members, we have just a few more items. Would you like to power through or take a break? Do I see power through or take a break?
Power through.
I hear power through. All right. Item seven point oh-two is the May fourth, twenty twenty-three Policy Committee Meeting Recommendations. Our first briefing was May sixteenth. This is the second briefing, and we are anticipating taking action on these policies on the consent agenda at the June twentieth meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the board members on these policies? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven point oh-three, the June first, twenty twenty-three Policy Committee Meeting Recommendations. This is the first briefing. We'll have a second briefing on the June twentieth agenda. And Director Rockman?
So we have four policies that we are bringing to the board tonight to be briefed, and we'll start with policy five oh-six.
Policy five oh-six is student discipline. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that students are aware of and comply with the school district's expectations for student conduct. This policy has been revised to conform to MSBA model policy five oh-six.
Policy five fourteen, bullying prohibition. We have no changes recommended. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence reprisal, retaliation, and other similar disruptive and detrimental behavior. This is our required annual review of the policy, and there are no changes.
Policy five twenty-six, hazing prohibition. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe learning environment for students and staff that is free from hazing. This is the RPS, annual review of this policy, and there are no changes.
Policy five thirty, immunization requirements. There are no changes to the annual RPS review of this policy, the purpose of which is to require that all students receive the proper immunizations as mandated by law to ensure the health and safety of all students.
Any questions or comments or suggestions, board members? Great. We'll talk about this again on the twentieth. Our next item is an action item, eight point oh-one, boys hockey co-op. The board first discussed this item at the May sixteenth meeting in prep for action. Superintendent McCall, any updates?
No exception so far as Mark Queasely, who's our activities director at Century High School, is here. And I believe, I'm not sure, Mark, if he were planning on revisiting the presentation or just are available for questions if they have any. Okay, I think that that does make sense. You can just see we're figuring it out right here in real time. I'm supportive of this cooperative agreement. I think that Mark and Brian Urkey, as our activities directors, have done their homework on this, and I think it makes sense in the interest of the broadest participation that we can have. For this sport?
Director Barlow?
I do have one question. I, Mr. Queasely and I, we happen to have been walking in at the same time, so he's familiar with this. And the question is dealing with, are there other areas, activities, sports, where there may be projections? We provided within your presentation an example of, for multiple years, you can show us where the decline has occurred. I was curious, are there other sports, be it girls or boys, activities or athletic or non-athletic, that we should be aware of and maybe considering seeing a co-op appear at some point in the future?
Great question. Director Barlow? Yes, each year, we take a look at our participation numbers district-wide. The activities directors spend some time looking at those numbers. At the end of each year, I do do a forecast from way back when I started in nineteen ninety-seven tracking these numbers. So we have a historical data. I would say we continue to look at our girls' hockey participation numbers at all three schools. Our boys' lacrosse numbers at Mayo are now becoming a question for us. And then also our gymnastics numbers, which we don't necessarily worry about gymnastics as much because all three teams practice and participate together. It's, we get our most bang for our buck out of that one. And then I would say the last one is our Alpine Ski, which was one of the last ones that we've added. We kind of keep a historical close eye on those. So but in this situation, as I told you the other time, or the meeting ago, this boys' hockey is quite unique because there's a group of kids that we do not want them to go elsewhere and find participation. And so that's why this one is right here and now for us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion on a second. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Chatfield and Rochester John Marshall for boys hockey for students in grades seven through twelve commencing on the above dates, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby agree to approve the co-op agreement between Century and John Marshall for boys hockey for students in grades seven through twelve commencing in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic year.
Move approval.
Second.
Hearing a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Queasely.
Thank you.
Our next item is also an action item. This is the school start times and transportation. We first discussed this at the May sixteenth meeting, and we asked the superintendent to provide the board with a revised resolution. So Superintendent McCall?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Board members, as you know, one of those building blocks of our strategic plan is redesigning transportation routes, and there's actually two aspects of that systems change. The first one has gotten all the attention, and that involves start times and moving our start times to the most optimal time developmentally for kids and in practical terms for families. The second wave, which we will actually start next year, is increasing transportation to our early childhood programming, which is incredibly effective programming, and our biggest bottleneck is getting the families, getting the kids from where they live to where we serve them. So that's just a teaser for what's next. For this year, I am excited that I think we have come up with a set of start times for most of our programs that balance the competing needs to have younger learners in class earlier when their young brains are ready to fire and connect those synapses and not putting our older students at the crack of dawn, like they were not just in Rochester so for many years. We arrived at this alternative set of start times through collaboration this year with an external organization, the Center for Effective School Operations. And as we talked about in detail in our briefing for you, the breakthrough really is reducing our high school day by about half an hour and shifting some of the core tier structure of our transportation system, such that elementary schools would start at seven fifty-five and conclude at two fifteen. Middle schools would start at eight thirty-five and conclude at three fifteen. High schools would begin at eight fifty and conclude at three thirty. Phoenix Academy Rail and Middle School Wright Fit would begin at eight twenty and end at two twenty PM, and our preschool morning program would begin at eight fifteen and conclude at ten forty-five, and our preschool afternoon program would begin at twelve fifteen and conclude at two forty-five. As board members are well aware, I and you had hoped to make this change for the next school year. And what we learned is that the complete redrawing of our transportation route structure that is going to be required to make this work needs more time. We actually are on the cusp of our Summer of Discovery Program, which of course also involves transporting thousands of kids, and we're coming off an extremely busy year. So we need another year. I think there's also benefit, though, in giving families another year, giving after-school programming another year, early childhood programming another year, and giving us another year to work out the additional issues that may exist for students in certain special programs and other things that will inevitably emerge. But very importantly, the analysis we did this year concludes that we can make this change in a cost-neutral way, so that this is not going to be at a time when we've just spent quite a bit of time looking at the difficulties of putting our district on the path to financial sustainability. This would not be a net increase in our transportation budget from its present status. So I'm recommending that you actually take a vote now to implement these start times for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I believe that gives our families and especially our educators at the elementary level certainty that it's going to happen. Of course, and I don't anticipate this, but if problems emerged as we begin doing the detailed planning for these start times, we would bring them back to you. It is likely that there would be a tweak one way or the other by several minutes to actually make sure that we have got the buses arriving and leaving when we need them to be. There's a second recommendation, though, in this proposal before you tonight, which would direct me to work with our team to look at the bigger picture of our transportation system, because when we were doing the analysis of start times, as you all saw from the report from CISO, our external consultants, we have an expensive transportation system in Rochester Public Schools, and we have a very complex transportation system. We have little kids getting off buses and transferring to get on other buses after a ride that can stretch for an hour or more across the community. And that is not a function of the skill of our transportation staff or the contractor that runs our routes for us. It's a function of the school choice or attendance area options that we give for our school district. And so I'm also recommending that you direct me to look at options to increase the cost-effectiveness and efficiency of the system and bring those back to you before December one of this year. That will be an effort that will take place analytically this summer, but with extensive input from our school communities in the fall, such that I'd be able to bring you a recommendation that reflects some decisions that potentially could lower the cost of our transportation system and put us in a better place for the long term with addressing some of the inefficiencies that were called out in our report, in particular, the very complex system of transfers, and potentially also the very extensive use of vans, which the consultant also pointed out and which is also very expensive. So I'm recommending action on start times at this time and that you direct a larger look to be completed by the end of the fall of the upcoming school year.
Board members, any questions? Director McLaughlin?
Just for clarification, what was updated in the resolution then, just so that I understand what's different?
May I?
Go ahead.
In my view, the previous resolution actually merged, converged to the two parts into one resolution and said, update start times and make it more efficient. This says, we are going to prove the start times bring us options for increased efficiency. And so they're related but separate. That's what we tried to clean up in the previous version. The start times was converged, and then, as we talked about actually during the board discussion, the two are related but, the two are related but not directly linked. You could change start times and change nothing else about the system, and we could still move to these start times. I would recommend that we also look at these larger issues that we gained some insight on through the start times effort, but that's the logic, Director McLaughlin, of the slight shift.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Director Rockman?
I think it's an important, well, maybe it's, I think it's an important observation that when we, if we vote to approve this resolution, that parents will have the start times now for the fall of twenty twenty-four, rather than having to make the switch this fall, which of course would be ideal in terms of student learning, but not so ideal for people who are having to scramble for alternative childcare arrangements, especially with elementary schools starting so early and ending commensurately earlier as well. So rather than tying that together with, this is the transportation plan, which we will have by December first, even December first for the following school year can be late for some families. So we're trying to give families as much flexibility as possible as to what's coming ahead for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Director Cutman?
Yeah, just to say that change in families' daily routines is very disruptive. Changing the start times is very disruptive because it directly affects the need for childcare arrangements and whatever the transportation solution that's selected, and I get that. I really, really do. But I also, both through my own set of kids and all of their friends, I feel like even aside from the scientific evidence and what we know about the need for sleep at different age groups and the optimal learning times for students of different ages, I'm convinced that this is going to be a good result for kids. And I would like to see it happen sooner rather than later, but creating some certainty and predictability about where we're headed in twenty-four makes a lot of sense to me. For all of the... For all of the same reasons and recognition of the disruptiveness of changes in the logistics of the transportation system and what that means for boundaries, et cetera, I'm reticent on the second point, but to the extent that it, that there's opportunities for further cost-effectiveness and ability to deploy the district's resources towards strategic priorities, I think it is a prudent step to investigate and see what the options are. So I'm supportive of both measures here, and thank you.
Director Garcia.
I would just echo Director Cook's comments, because I think when Director Cook, Director McLaughlin, and I were running, also Director Barlow, in 2020, this was such a hot-button issue, and I can tell you how many people, even after like the election occurred and before our first meeting, before we were sworn in, were like, what are you going to do about start times? And I think that this is such an important shift, and I, the frustration that I had, I think in the past was, well, it's just going to be too hard and we don't know how to do it. And I think, like, to me, that's not an acceptable answer for really anything. So I appreciate, one, I think Director McLaughlin talks about, like, this is decades in the making because it was an issue when her children were in school, that I'm glad that we finally got to this point, and I appreciate the separation of the two items because I think that was where we were getting stuck before, is, well, we can read the science and we understand and we can, you know, maybe sympathize but not empathize, but we're not going to do the work that needs to be done to make sure that school is a healthy start time and end time and also accessible in terms of like our transportation. So I do look forward to the options that you will bring forward because I think a one-tier system for busing at a district our size is incredible to me. I grew up in a district where the high schools were separate from the middle school in terms of like the school board, so they were like their own separate district, and even they would collaborate in a much smaller district to do multi-tier busing. So I can appreciate all of the effort this is going to take, and I do apologize to the families who had been waiting and waiting and waiting for this, and they have to wait an additional year. And I'm hoping, though, that with the wait, I have trusted you, Superintendent, that we're going to do this right and that this will continue on and be effective for families for years to come.
And I think I'd also like to add that when we talk in the resolution about directing you to implement the start times, it's not just about buses and times. It could also, we are going to have to restructure our SAC program because of when we're providing care and look at options. I know childcare is an issue in this community generally, so I hope that some of our community members who are in that childcare can take this opportunity to have the time to also perhaps come together as a community to look at childcare as an issue more broadly, because we can't provide childcare for all of our students and our families that need it. So this also provides maybe a little bit more of a lens on that, on that building on our partnership conversation from previously in our, in our meeting.
Well, and since Chair Nathan, since we're naming the complexities, this will also have implications for the schedule during, the course schedule during the day in the high schools, which we've talked with them about and we know we can work through, but we're going to have to work, that also needs to start early so they can plan ahead for those adjustments, too.
Registration and things like that. Okay. All right, hearing no other questions, I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 directs the superintendent to implement the school's starting and ending times as reasonably close as possible to the times presented to the school board on May 16th, 2023, and again on June 6th, 2023, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 directs the superintendent to present the plan to enhance the efficiency and the cost effectiveness of the district's transportation system to the RPS school board no later than December 1st, 2023.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes. Next item on our agenda is our ABCD. Are there any items that a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future school board meeting agenda? Hearing none. 10.01, board questions and responses. There were no questions submitted by board members on tonight's agenda items. And upcoming board meeting dates, on the 13th of June, we have a study session at 5 o'clock, on the 20th, at 5:30, a regular meeting, and study sessions on June 27th and July 18th at 5 o'clock PM. The next item on our agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-05 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege. While in closed session, the board will engage in a confidential discussion with legal counsel regarding litigation strategy and a proposed settlement reached in a confidential mediation session. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The board moves into closed session at 7:25 PM.